Item number nineteen, yeah. Status update on Highway twenty Better Street Design Guide for the future enhancement of Highway twenty, Highway ninety-nine.
I'm Mr. Bush.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present this update for you. This has been a very long work in progress and it will continue to be some additional phases, but I'm here tonight to give you an update on the city's Highway twenty revitalization strategy for the future enhancement of Highway twenty between Highway ninety-nine and the city limits. This project has a long history to it, so I'm not going to get into all of that. This project. Here is again. Highway twenty, here's Highway ninety-nine and the city's eastern limits over here. And here's a different view of Highway twenty. Just want to point out real quick, there's more than seventy driveways on Highway twenty, which creates a lot of challenges too. The Highway twenty revitalization strategy, when we set out to do this several years ago, was really a multi-phase approach to improve the appearance and the functionality of Highway twenty. I think when we did our workshops with the public and with the city council and other stakeholders, we really came to the same conclusion that it's a very underutilized highway corridor. It's definitely a transportation corridor, but it's also a commerce corridor. But this side of Highway ninety-nine is really underutilized and showing signs of aging. And unfortunately, with the loss of redevelopment, the ability for us to get involved and help spur on new development and help that corridor was heavily hindered because we lost redevelopment funds to invest. But when we started this effort, you know, here's just a quick overview. It's that the vision for the revitalization strategy is to create an active and vibrant corridor of regional serving and neighborhood serving, commercial and service uses that will integrate well with the surrounding mixed use and residential development. New development and redevelopment will provide visible enhancements to the corridor and help create a sense of place and distinct character in this important gateway area. And that's really important because jumping over to another effort that the city council has been heavily involved with. Here's your Grow Your Economy blueprint that the council just reviewed this earlier this year. And I bring this up is because one of the, this particular document had three overarching goals. Grow our image, grow our businesses, and grow our people. Well, right there, number one is our image. And so here's specific goals from that strategy plan. Continue physical improvements to create a sense of place and then specifically enhance the corridors and gateways, medians, landscaping on Highway ninety-nine and Highway twenty downtown and cleaning up activities assigned. Then here's an actual implementation lying out right out of that strategy. Again, enhancing the corridors and gateways. That group that worked on this document and along with the city council felt very strongly at the time that the image is really economic development generating. And so when you look at this effort here, it's really synonymous with what we're trying to do on the Highway twenty revitalization strategy, which is really a combination of public and private improvements that I'll share with you as I go through this. Now, as part of this, I was, we gave you all copies of this. And I know that there's lots of moving pieces in this document. It's not my goal tonight to go through all of that with you. I will say, as your planning director, the benefits of this document are many. It helps set the framework for our future vision for Highway twenty. It gives me tools that I currently do not have to help private investors with what the vision of Highway twenty is. Right now, I don't have anything to share with them except there's unencode, which is about thirty years out of date. And so right now, there's no continuity, there's no design standards per se, and there's no opportunities to streamline the process. So if someone came in right now and said, I'd like to revitalize or redevelop a section of Highway twenty, it wouldn't be a good starting point. And to get private investment to come in, it's been my experience that you need to make it easy for them. And this document is one piece of the ultimate toolkit that I'm hoping that I can prepare for you in the city that will help us do just that and encourage private investment in that corridor. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail here in just a second. But the other main part of my focus tonight is the public investment portion of that corridor. Because we really believe that we have an exciting opportunity to do something here on Highway twenty that shows that the city's committed to do this image here, to creating a sense of place and cleaning that corridor up with some very simple steps. And so I'll walk through those now. So the first thing that this document did and that we did as part of our study is setting a vision for the corridor. Over here on the left, you have an existing picture of Highway twenty. Every eye has a different view of it, but this is pretty bland. The vision is over here. And there's many steps to this and I'll go into those in more detail. Will this vision happen overnight? No. This vision, if it ever gets there, is probably twenty, thirty years or more out there. But things can be done in the interim sooner than later. Here's just some other pictures of the Highway twenty corridor. Not very friendly right now. And again, the interesting thing that I got out of these workshops that we did with our first phase is that there's a sense that this is just a corridor. It's to move people from one place to the other, to get where they need to go. And it can be so much more than that. It can still serve that primary function, but it can also be much more to help promote new economic growth and development as well as just improving that image that I talked about in the economic development strategy. You can see here right now that, you know, in terms of walkability, you have a pedestrian battling with this vehicle over here. Fortunately, they made it past the first part of it. So, public and private investment. I talked about that at the beginning. This is what this looks like. So don't worry too much about this stuff over here on the private side, but this right here is our right of way. And this document has typical sections of every street block in the study area. So we have detailed information in this document about what's existing and what's planned for those areas here. But I wanted to start with this one because this shows what we're talking about in terms of public and private to create that ultimate vision. And so what we're talking about in the public right of way is new sidewalks, new street furniture, new street lighting, new landscape, tree wells, and then of course, the median islands here. And I'll have more on that in just a moment. Here's a different view of looking at it. But we believe that the addition of this public improvements here will really make a difference on that street corridor. Again, if you look at what's there now, no landscaping, no landscaping, no landscaping. Much different. So here's some more details we're talking about. You know, this is, again, this is part of that toolkit that I was talking about as your planning director that gives me an opportunity to help people see the vision and start putting those pieces together in terms of what that street's going to look like. Street trees, ground cover, median trees. We're going to be taking this in future phases that I'll go over in just a moment to work very closely with Caltrans because obviously this is their right of way. And so these materials right here have to be to their liking. Mentioned that, you know, we have cross-sections for every block of Highway twenty in the document. This is just an example. Here's the existing cross-section. This is what it looks like with some additional planning stages and construction drawings, which we're talking about doing in these upcoming phases. We hope to get to this. And we believe that by initiating this level of improvement, we can start generating interest and investment from the private side to get to those other pictures that I shared with you. This is just all the different, you know, existing cross-sections for all of those street blocks that I shared with you. And then the document, again, takes each section, identifies what's existing and then what improvements are planned. And when we shared this with Caltrans, they were pretty excited about this because there's a lot of opportunity for improvement out here. Still maintaining that number one primary function of Highway twenty, which is, you know, a transportation corridor. But at the same time, can we improve its safety and we improve its design and its aesthetics? I mentioned earlier that there's over seventy intersections on here. Let me go back real quick.
Driveways, I think you said.
Driveways, thank you. As you can see right here, these driveways, these are wide driveways, very numerous and close together. Coordinating the consolidation of those driveways is going to be a very critical step in this process to improve safety and just make for better function and design of that street corridor and private projects. This document helps us get there.
Aaron, I don't see any roundabouts.
Well, if you'd like to see that, it's on page fifty-two.
I'm just teasing you.
Aaron, while you're talking about the landscaping, one of the ones you showed, whether we had the landscaping in the median and alongside. I would presume that this means that we would have some kind of an agreement with Caltrans because they don't have a very good record of maintaining the landscaping that is existing. They basically have recently gone through and just cut down everything that was there. And if we're going to invest this in the future, that we want to have some input as to how that is maintained, just like we did on the ninety-nine strip and Highway twenty.
Absolutely. That's a very critical part. And we just recently met with the new director of Caltrans and shared our vision with them. And I walked away with the impression that they were pretty excited about it and supportive of it and appreciated the fact of our proactiveness on the maintenance agreements to make sure that this is a positive step. And the other encouraging part about that as a side note is that they have some issues to work out with their sidewalks over here as part of their own project. And, you know, I threw out that there's maybe an opportunity to work together on coordinating that effort, so.
Well, I know a prime example of this is the work they did on Highway ninety-nine at Queens intersection a year, year or two years ago. And I don't know how many millions of dollars that were spent on that project, but it's not being maintained properly. And so anything that we do going forward, we have to look at the operation and maintenance of this to the future, not just doing the project and then walking away from it like they have done in the past.
No, absolutely. And, you know, this area obviously is going to be very, very visible. And it's something that we'll want to make sure that, as you say, we make the investment. We want to make sure to keep it up and it's high-quality appearance. This right here is, if I can do it, is a photo simulation of the different phases. That's the existing conditions. It had landscaping, street furniture, lighting, street trees. You really get a start to get a feel of what that corridor can look like just with simple investment. Now, I say simple, but nothing. Working with the right of way there is simple, but I feel that we're on a good track. I think that, you know, this first phase identifies the pictures. And then I'll get into it momentarily about the next phase where we're actually going to start designing this. We're going to take that plant palette that I shared with you and start performing working drawings to get to just exactly the technical details of what these look like. What's the lane striping, what's the width and the type of plant material so that we can be ready? And I'll go over that for you in just a moment. So this is really the immediate phase in terms of public improvement. Then you start getting into private, you know, investment. Because realistically, this type of design right here is more efficient, more economical, and more advantageous for a property owner because you're getting a higher rate of return on your land because you're intensifying it. And you're putting the parking in the back, it's much more accessible, much more safe. And so ultimately, that's what your corridor could look like. Okay. So the next, where do we go from here? Phase one was this document that I talked about here, the Highway twenty corridor project. This was funded through a grant from SACOG. I believe that we got our money's worth out of this, I really do. Because as I said, this gives me the ability to work with developers, prospective landowners, existing landowners, and give them an idea of what we're envisioning down there. Clearly, the next step from a private investment will be to take it to a corridor specific plan or master plan where we start doing things like form-based codes, streamlining the development process so that someone can come right in, boom, off they go. We have the environmental document that's needed and it really makes it much more efficient for future development. Phase two, that's what we're working on now. And that's what we've been working on all this time while we've been away from you since the last time we saw you on phase one. Phase two is doing the preliminary design for the entire corridor. And when I say preliminary design, I'm talking fifty percent level construction drawings in the public right of way section. So sidewalk to sidewalk. And so what we're intending to do is work very closely with Caltrans to get the concepts down to even more specific detail. And that would include those things such as median locations and designs, lane width, and then furniture types, plant material type. And so that's all covered from the entire corridor. Okay? Then the second part of that is that we want to do a pilot project. We want to show people what we're talking about. And we just happened to pick one of the more challenging sections on Highway twenty between Stafford and Clark. And so our goal is to use the second grant that we've received to improve, do a hundred percent drawings for that particular street section so that we can get that constructed sooner than later so we can show what that future corridor is going to look like. Phase three, we do the remainder of the construction drawings for the remainder of the corridor project and we apply for a construction grant. And based on my conversations with the SACOGs, we could be eligible to apply for a construction grant as early as next year and then start construction if all things, if everything lines up just right. We could start construction on those public, yeah, those public improvements for the entire section in two thousand seventeen potentially, maybe two thousand eighteen. The pilot project would certainly happen sooner than that, but then you really have an enhanced corridor in less than five years is our goal. This just shows you a picture of what I'm talking about in terms of the area. The green represents fifty percent drawings and then the red represents a hundred percent drawing. So in the overall scheme of things, our goal is to have this constructed and improved in the next couple of years. And then we follow that up within five years with the rest of the construction here. Again, in my mind, it's a very exciting planning project, a community development project, but it's also a very exciting economic development project. And so I appreciate the council's support of this project. I appreciate your patience as we put these pieces together. Phase two is out for RFP. We anticipate getting that here before the end of the year and bringing that back to council so we can award the contract to get started on those fifty percent construction drawings in coordination with Caltrans. And again, thank you for your support and I'll be happy to answer all your questions.
Questions for Mr. Bush, this is just for note and file only, yes.
Aaron, having been on the planning commission for so many years and getting involved with the League of Cities educational part of the planning commission thing, this really is a great plan. And it may not ever happen, the long-term vision, but the steps going towards that make logical sense. And I'm hoping that future councils will continue to support and assuming we have support here, continue to support and see this project forward to whatever end it comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the mayor.
Yes.
Aaron, some of these are just going to be observations that I made from the document that was supplied to us out of the grant. But I think that they need to be corrected if we're going to move forward with additional phases. And one of those is the two thousand eleven collision data that was provided within the report on page forty-five, I think is in great error as to its numbers. And I would like to have them look at that and also go back and maybe work with. They relied on Berkeley data. And I'd like to see them work with our police department directly and also with our Switters reports, which also provide data to the Tims software over in Berkeley. Couple of other things is the reduced lane widths. I'm a big proponent of those. I think that we can still move all of our commercial traffic through that area with reduced lane width. When it comes down to pedestrian safety, it's important to reduce the curb-to-curb width. So I think that that's good. But one of the other pieces that they list in there, and they dedicate three or four pages to it, talks about mid-block crosswalks or crossings. Uba City has a history of litigation where we were not the favored recipient of the findings by the court for mid-block crosswalks. And in California, that is an area of high litigation. All the safety experts, there's, there are thousands of them available to testify against cities, jurisdictions, and everyone else that may put these type of features within their jurisdiction. I understand that there's a, that there is a light there. But their purpose is really to keep target speeds on on track through the corridor. That helps reduce and reduces emissions from vehicles, frustration. As Uba City grows, anytime you have a corridor like this, there'll be more and more traffic. But that corridor handles this time of year about thirty-seven thousand daily vehicle trips. It does grow in the next month to something near fifty thousand. And so we do have to keep traffic moving through that corridor. And I think that those are some of the things that we addressed as we went through the planning stages. All of the safety stops that they have that or, you know, pedestrian crossings at intersections, I think are, you know, pieces that are really required given the width of that right of way. And I'd like to see more of that incorporated at the intersections. I do know that in talking to Caltrans and certainly the goal to keep traffic moving through the area is also to reduce any uncontrolled left-hand turns through there. And in some of the preliminary drawings that are available and first in some of the phase construction that we can do through this, it does increase our left-hand turns that are currently signed up as no left-hand turn. So, I mean, I'd like to see those addressed in more detail as we move forward with this to try to eliminate those components out of this design. Those are the only comments I have.
Okay. And you have Pat Miller who wishes to talk on this up. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Is it okay to respond to those comments?
Yeah.
Because I think those are valid comments. And one thing that I should have pointed out about this particular document, unlike other master plan or specific plan documents, this is not regulatory. This is really a handbook, if you will, that doesn't bring with it any legislative backing, if you will. I'm not, you're not required to adopt or a resolution or an ordinance to approve this because it's not changing anything. What it's doing however, though, is establishing some building blocks that I can then go out and start building those next steps. So these things here that you see here will grow and evolve as things happen. But I completely agree with your comments. And what will happen ultimately is that my thought is that we'll eventually need to get to a specific plan for this area. And that's when we'll start getting into those real defined specific details and triggering mechanisms and all those types of things. And those will definitely be brought back to go through every detail with the planning commission and the city council upon that approval. And so we can certainly make note of that here and, you know, make sure going forward that your comments are adequately addressed going forward.
And I appreciate your response. One of the things that we have to be mindful of is we are government. A document that exists today exists forever. And litigation is based on those documents that can be dug up, trenched up, found in the archives to be brought forward at a later date as is proof in some of our prior cases of litigation against the city.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Pat Miller.
Pat Miller, Uba City. I was watching the presentation and I kept thinking grass in the median, grass on each side. The maintenance of that is horrendous. And every time you get a person out there in the median, you got to close a lane. And that's on a state highway with heavy traffic. So further, you have to have the water for that grass and the trees, not so much, but the grass needs water. And if you're going to put grass in the median, it's going to be a major maintenance problem and costs a lot of money to maintain. I guess my concern is how much money and how much time are we going to expend studying this major transportation corridor through the city? In late two thousand twelve, a study of the corridor was given to the Walkable and Livable Communities Institute. At the March nineteen, two thousand thirteen meeting, I asked a number of questions which were never answered and asked for a copy of the completed study, which I never received. The city spent a hundred and eleven thousand on that study. Then in February of this year, you authorized the application for a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar Sustainable Communities Planning Grant and Incentives Program. And question is, was that grant ever received? And if so, was a contract let on that project? That is one heck of a lot of money to develop, quote, plans. And I read the twelve grant objectives and questions on that particular grant. And I looked at it and said, whether I don't believe the Highway twenty corridor meets any of them to any major degree. More questions. When was the SACOG grant authorized for phase one of the Highway twenty revitalization strategy? And how much did the city receive? Why wasn't the Highway twenty Better Streets Design Guide noted, which was noted on the Agenda staff report, posted on the internet so the public could see what was developed in phase one? We had to come into the office and of course, I don't look at the agenda until probably closer to the meeting. So, you know, that isn't an option. It's disappointing that the city is applying and using grant money repeatedly to study the State Highway twenty corridor. It's a state highway, it's under the jurisdiction of Caltrans. And as was stated, any changes that are made must be approved by Caltrans. So you can nibble around the edges, but you cannot reduce the carrying capacity of the state highway. Lighting improvements, landscaping on private property, establishing building guidelines are all well and good, but they, they need to be studied, do they need to be studied to death? And we seem to be going there repeatedly. And I'd like to see you folks take a really a realistic look at what you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Miles.
Elaine Miles, ditto everything she said. But I want to talk a little bit. I know this is a computer program, there's not a driveway on there. And think of the businesses that are there. When I lived in Live Oak, the city of Live Oak came up with this wonderful plan for Pennington Road. They were going to take away my driveway, they were going to take away my trees, all these wonderful things. And I, of course, could come in the backside. No. My private property, my right. I fought it, I won. I informed all the other neighbors, they fought it too. I cannot see property owners giving up their right to a driveway. That is very much the value of their property. And I can't see the city being able to buy it because they're expensive. Those are businesses down there, it is a highway. You can make it a little bit prettier maybe, but this is dreaming and is spending yours and my money to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. This is just for note and file, so we will thank you, Aaron, through the mayor.
Yes. Could I have Aaron address the planning strips? Because I know we talked about the fact that these show grass, but what we talked about would be drought-resistant type plantings and not necessarily having grass on there.
Through the mayor, if I might throw something in there, I think these are conceptual drawings. It's going to take years for this stuff to happen. And I think at that time, the landscaping will probably be addressed. I don't think we're going to decide tonight if we're going to have grass, if we're going to have cactus, if we're going to have decomposed granite, you know? This is way down the road, this is conceptual, folks.
Both statements are accurate. The purpose for drawing green The purpose for drawing green here was simply to save some time and money for the architect to draw in something, you know, all the different little plants. As you can see here, ground covers is a variety of different drought-tolerant ground covers that we identify here. And, and Councilmember Starkey's absolutely correct. This is just a, a, a starting point, if you will. And then everything we do here has to go through Caltrans. And so again, when we come back with those specifications that phase two consists of, we'll be bringing that back to city council for public consideration and, and review and comment to see exactly what we're doing out there where everybody will have an opportunity to, to take a look at that.
Okay. Yes.
And if you wouldn't mind just answering Pat Miller's question on the Walkable Communities grant and what the outcome was.
Well, the outcome is this document. And again, you know, I can understand why those who are not, you know, as involved in the planning field as I am don't, may not see the value of it. But again, I think there's a lot of value on it immediately and is a building block for the future. And so we're not studying everything. And Ms. Miles' comments about, you know, what will happen here with driveways and everything? You're absolutely right. I don't know what's gonna happen. This is, this is a concept, a vision to give us something to, to, to shoot for and to start towards. You can have planning documents like this that have all these nice pretty pictures in them. And then when it actually comes to implementation, the end product could be something completely different than this. But this at least has the groundwork on, on how to go and start to, to reinvest in your community and build some, you know, some fiscal help.
And if, if I could just make a couple of observations. Gridley, if you, if you drive through Gridley and see some of those preliminary little changes that have occurred, that's part of the same, this, this, well, we're not talking about roundabouts. The roundabout here is in the appendix. Somebody asked them to bury it. I asked it to be eliminated, but it got buried. So that's fine. And, and I would say if we ever see one, that, good luck. It may, it may be here someday. I hope I never have to drive through it. Live Oak is, is in those very same stages right now of working on their quarter. There are other jurisdictions. South Lake Tahoe on the California side of the border is actually in what we are looking at right here, where they have some split development that's going on in there. The economy certainly put a little bit of plug in that project. But it's, it is one of those pieces that moves a community forward and, and out of a less-than-desirous appearance and also consolidates more of its, of its commercial ability to serve a, a larger community. And that's what the Highway 20 corridor is built on. Just right now, if you shop at Staples and you need to pick up something at, at, for your pet, you're driving between locations. In an environment like this, oftentimes you can just simply walk from one location to another because they're all on the same properties, so.
I was just gonna add, just to give a, a, a real-time example. If you look at the city of Citrus Heights in the old Sunrise Mall, a very underutilized corridor. It was deteriorating and, you know, poor elements were moving in. It was borderline blight. The city got together, initiated a public improvement campaign with the help of a P-bid, got many public improvements put in there with regards to landscaping, furniture, signage, enhancements. And then the, then the private investors got on board and, and redeveloped that, you know, entire corridor. And I'm sure if we were to talk to them about the, the, you know, the influx of economic health and growth as a result of that effort, it would be pretty remarkable. And that's kind of the, what we're looking at trying to achieve here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bush. I know that this is just a note and file and no action needed on this item. And so we're so far away, Mr. Starkey. Yeah, we're so far away because those trees, we wanna make sure that they don't attract the crows, so. I mean, that could be here for another hour, right? I, I just wanna make sure. That's for our new crow festival.
Yeah, appreciate that. Our next thing item, I'm gonna move this thing along because this is getting a little bit, a little bit late.